Good evening, I'm going to go ahead and call to order our Planning Commission meeting for Monday, February 8th. I'm going to ask Commissioner McCann if he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Thank you, Madam Secretary, if you could call Roy please.
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present.
All right, and if we can look at to approve the meeting minutes from our last meeting of January 25th?
I move we approve the meeting minutes.
Second?
Right, if you could vote please. All right, those minutes passed unanimously. Do we have any requests this evening for public comment for any item that is not on our agenda?
No, Chair Opal.
Thank you very much. We have no items on our consent calendar this evening, so that'll take us to public hearing, which is item number two. Tentative parcel map, TPM 20-0002, variants V20-0003, minor site development permit, SDP 20-0014M, and administrative modifications of the standards AMS 21-0001 for a triplex condominium that proposes to exceed the maximum height for the zoning district, retaining walls with increased height, and a reduction in the required common open space at 25022 Silva Road. Do we have a staff report this evening?
Yes, we do. Senior Planner John Champa provides a staff report.
Good evening Chair Opal and Planning Commissioners. John Champa, I'm the case planner on the Silva triplex. The project site is located within the RMF 14, or the Residential Multifamily 14 zoning designation. The site is an existing vacant lot that is 8,287 square feet. The site is located within an inland canyon of the city, within the Lantern District, and is surrounded by existing development of multifamily and single-family structures. Just to give you a little background on this project, it resulted in a preliminary review in front of the Planning Commission in August 10th of 2020, at which time the Planning Commission reviewed the, considered two design options for consideration to address and look at the topographical and driveway grade issues associated with the project. Issues identified by the Planning Commission were the challenges associated with the grade of the site and the driveway, as well as issues to be considered by the applicant, which included the retaining walls adjacent to the development along Copper Lantern, as well as considering any possible design options to improve any potential impacts to that adjacent development. Project's scope before you today is for two residential structures, which would comprise three total units. The units would range in size from 1,216 square feet to 1,443 square feet. Each unit would have a two-car garage, and the project would provide one guest parking space. Unit A is proposed to be 32 and 1/2 square feet, which is located at the front of the lot, and units B and C, which are the structure at the rear of the lot, are proposed at 30 feet. Retaining walls also are proposed up to 14 feet in height, and a height variance is required to provide story poles, which have been erected on-site. This is the existing conditions of the site. As you can see, it's vacant. It is located adjacent to a vacant lot, which is a corn lot, so we have the photos here in front of you along Silva Road, as well as Cayenne Primavera, for context. The slope of the lot is 17%, and that's measured from the highest point to the lowest point, as you can see here, as reflected on the, with the red line via the topographical map that was prepared for the project. This is the proposed site plan. As you can see, it includes two structures, one front one with a 12-foot, 12 and 1/2-foot separation, which is where the vehicle, guest space would be located, and then a second structure located at the rear of the lot. Just for context, the driveway would be taken off the left side of the lot when facing it along Silva Road, which would have a ramp down to the first garage, and then there would be a vehicle maneuvering area to the guest parking space, which is stated is located between the two structures, as well as the two garage parking stalls for units B and C. These are the standards associated with the proposed development based on the, that's incorrect, that's actually should be the RSF 14 zoning designation. However, the standards are reflected, and as you see, it's non-compliance associated with the requested heights, as stated at 30 and 32 and 1/2 feet, as well as the request for the, or as well as the common area open space, which is proposed at 20% where 30% is required. These are the floor plans of the proposed project. As you can see, on the left-hand side here is for unit A, which has the garage and a bedroom located on the first floor. And with unit B and C, it's a little bit of a reverse configuration, that the garages are also located on the first floor, and then it has the kitchens and dining rooms that are located on that floor. And then when approaching unit A, the second floor would have the kitchen dining area, as well as a master bedroom. And then for units B and C, instead of going up, it would go down, down the grade, which would have the kitchens and dining room areas, as well as the master bedroom and second bedroom. These are the renderings of the proposed project, which reflect the modern design of, as proposed. Rendering's looking left and right, just for context of the site. Since the project is proposing condominiums, it's considered a subdivision, which is subject to the section identified here, 905-110-A5, which requires the height of a building to be measured from finished grade. Elsewhere within the community, structures' heights would be measured from existing grade. However, because it's subdivision, it's required to be measured from finished grade. So for, in illustration, as the surrounding neighborhood is reflective of development that has transpired over the course of 40 to 50 years, they would, many of those structures were subject to the county code, which is reflected here in this graphic. So the county code's measurement for height is different than the Planning Commission, or the Planning, or the zoning code for the City of Dana Point presently. So the blue line reflects what the county code requirement is and was at that time, which takes the measurement from five feet outside the structure up the designated height, and then essentially creating a box around the structure. So it follows the topography. However, with the City of Dana Point's zoning ordinance, it's required to take the greatest distance from the lowest point to the highest point for each structure. So there's a little bit of difference in terms of when you go out on-site and you look at the structures while they are taller than what the City of Dana Point would require, that's because of the development that occurred over the course of the county's jurisdiction. So this is a representation of the north elevation. As you can see, we have the two structures, the front structure, which would occupy unit A, and then the back structure. So the, in blue is the proposed retaining wall at a total of 14 feet in height, which is requested because of the need to comply with the city's driveway grade requirements, which staff will discuss shortly. And then, as you can see towards the back of the lot, there are two-stepped retaining walls, ranging from 5.25 feet to 7.25 feet, to establish the back building pad, as well as a walkout patio for the back units. This is the south elevation, as represented, and as you can see, the same building configurations. Along this elevation, no retaining wall is proposed. Along this elevation is where the lowest grade points are provided as part of the project that's proposed, is illustrated here in the star and the red lines. So as you can see, unit A is proposed at 32 and 1/2 feet, where per code, 24 feet would be required. And then you can see the back building, units B and C are proposing at 30 feet. This is the east side elevation, or the rear elevation. As you can see here, the, we have the two-step retaining walls, so this lower wall, at its greatest height, as previously stated, is 5.25 feet. And then the back wall is separated by five feet, and then it would be seven feet in height, or 7.25 feet in height. So to discuss the driveway grade, which is a key component of the project, and the requests that are, requested entitlements that are before you today, is the Dana Point zoning code requires that the maximum grade for the first 10 feet of the driveway be 10% along the center line, and then following that, it would be, the maximum is 15% thereafter. Additionally, the parking stalls, loading areas, parking aisles, and parking stall and maneuvering areas, which is located at the back portion of the lot, where the driveway, where the garage accesses are, that has a limited slope of 1 to 5%. So this is an aerial, or the preliminary grading plan represented of what's being proposed, and as you can see here, highlighted are the different grades representing the transition from driveway apron down to the driveway ramp, which is proposed at 15%. And then it transitions down to 6%, and then to a flatter area, 1% to provide drainage to the different drainage locations, and at that point is where the garage accesses are. One of the challenges with providing additional slope through this area that staff analyzed was having a garage access approach level is best design practice for a vehicle to enter into the garage, whereas if there's additional cross-slope, then you have to flatten that area in front of the garage to provide adequate vehicular access to those particular areas. Tentative parcel map is required to convert the units to, for individual sale into condominiums. Project is compliance with the lot density, in that per the RMF 14 zoning designation, one unit is allowed per 2,600 square feet of lot area. And as, and the existing site is 8,287 square feet, which would allow for 13, or three units. Variants is requested, as previously stated, to exceed the maximum lot height for the project. Key considerations for that are associated with the 17% slope of the lot, as well as the driveway slopes required by the Dana Point zoning code, as stated at 10% for the first 10 feet, and then 15% thereafter, as well as vehicular circulation areas, which are limited to 1 to 5%. And as a result of that, essentially, the driveway slope is a limiting factor in getting the buildings as low as possible on the lot, as well as establishing the building pads for the proposed development. So with that, the driveway slope and the grade of the lots are creating a practical difficulty and hardship condition to provide vehicle, vehicular access to the site, as well as the adjacent properties don't have the same driveway grade limitations, in that many of them have a lateral access down the lot, and are located along Cayenne Primavera or Copper Lantern, so there's a side access, there's a grading cut that's established to get into those lots, whereas this is going down, directly down the slope. And there are, there are adjacent structures that have similar heights when you take into account the measurement method by the Dana Point zoning code, which is required to measure from the lowest point, the lowest finished grade to the highest point of the structure, and that's illustrated in the photos that were included as a supporting document to your package for the staff report. Minor site development is required for retaining walls over 30 inches. As proposed, the topography of the site, retaining walls are needed to provide the vehicular access and to create the building pads necessary to meet the Dana Point zoning code. Retaining walls are proposed throughout the site at 14 feet to provide this access and building pad, the access and building pads. The administrative modification of the standards is requested to reduce the required common area open space, which is requested to be reduced from 30% to 20%. The lot is constrained due to its size and width, and in terms of being able to provide this required common open space. The driveway and motor court cannot be counted in terms of this common area open space, and, which limits the opportunities to provide this required area. However, as part of the analysis, the lot does have, or the project is providing 35.6% lot coverage, where 60% would be allowed for this particular zone. So there is area that can be used as common open space, however, it cannot technically be counted as that. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation. Staff is recommending approval of their required entitlements, subject to the findings and conditions of approval in the draft resolution. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you for that report. I'm going to open it up for Commissioner questions to staff. Commissioner McCann?
Thank you, Jonathan. Very thorough, you answered a bunch of my questions already. The site, the drainage is all going to go, be collected, and then be into a sump pump backup to Silva, correct?
Correct.
You covered that. Why aren't the driveways counted as common open space? I mean, it kind of seems like, like it would be, because they can't be blocked with parking.
Correct. I think the, the code is somewhat vague in terms of the, what is considered common area open space, and it's really how it's, it's defined is more of a larger apartment or condominium complex, in that it identifies, you know, basketball courts, patio covers, picnic areas, things of that nature. So it's, it's not well-defined, and staff took the conservative approach in terms of reviewing that, and in the past, practice has also been to not include the driveway and motor court areas.
Okay, so it's more, in the code, it's more of like a pure recreational area?
Correct.
Okay. So the, because it's a new subdivision, the height gets calculated based on the new finished grade, correct?
That's correct.
And the height, the tall heights seem to really be down the one right side, or probably the north side of the, of the site. Could they have, could the applicant have built a retaining wall, or proposed a retaining wall along that side, that would have raised the finished grade on that side, which would have had the net effect of shrinking the building heights?
Yes, and that was part of the consideration, is a potential alternative design at the preliminary review with the Planning Commission, and there were, the key point or element of consideration was looking at, okay, what would be the potential impacts to the adjacent neighbors? And if a wall were located immediately on the property line, that would, you know, reduce the structural separation between this, the proposed project and their existing sites. And the, you know, staff's opinion was that if additional separation were to be provided, as well as additional vertical landscaping, that might soften the appearance, given that the overall building elevations, the top point would, would remain the same.
Right, so they could have done it to technically make the buildings more compliant with the, with that height, but collectively, you felt that it was better without that, and have some more landscaping and separation?
Correct, that was the opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Donner?
Jonathan, the, what is the percentage of grade where it qualifies for an exception?
The hillside development ordinance allows for additional height if the lot meets a 20% grade?
20%.
And, and this falls short of that.
It's, you said 17?
Correct.
Okay. And what is the distance to the nearest neighbor?
That would be the, the neighbor that has, that's along Copper Lantern, and it would be approximately five feet from the property, from the side property line at its close, at, at the structure's closest point.
And the retaining walls, in the summary, I see it says 12 feet, but it's 14 feet at the highest?
It should be 14 feet, correct.
And, and the amount of fill, is there a maximum amount of fill allowed in a residential property?
There is not.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Vice Chair Lawson?
Thank you, and then first let me just, on a side note, or as part of just full disclosure, I did meet with several of the neighbors last, I think it was last week. I did also run into the architect, who was on-site when I was walking my dog, but we didn't discuss the project in detail, but I did spend about 45 minutes on-site with neighbors. I think you, you actually helped with a couple of my questions, but can you help me with a few of these, Jonathan? Do you know the width of the driveway versus the required width of the driveway?
Both the required width and the provided width are 24 feet.
Okay, so that's our, our requirement for the whole length of the driveway, so they can't shrink it down?
Unfortunately not, no.
Okay. And, so walk me, if you could, could you walk me through, if this was 20% or above, how would the measurement of this development be undertaken versus how it is currently in the plan?
Certainly, so the measurement for a project would be taken from, for a condominium project, it would be taken from the finished grade. However, for projects that are 20% of slope, they're allowed, in a flat roof scenario, a maximum height of 29 feet.
Okay. And if it wasn't, if there was no parcel map, what, what changes under the hillside, and then under the current situation here?
So under the hillside, they would be measured from the elevation of the garage, the garage level?
On the hillside?
Correct.
Okay. That's the, so the finished floor of the garage would be the finished, would be the, the bottom of their measurement?
Correct.
So they go up from there?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I know we and Commissioner McCann talked a little bit about it, but there was a different proposal where they had retaining walls, or there was a discussion at a study session, where if you use retaining walls along the property line, they effectively change the way the measurements occur, and the same height would be allowed without a variance. Is that an accurate depiction of what happened at that meeting?
That is correct.
Or was the proposal, and sort of the understanding of how our zoning works on this site?
That is correct, and just to go back to your last point, while there's the public discussion, I'd like to go back just to make sure specifically it's measured from the garage elevation, if it met the hillside. I'm very confident in that, but I want to make sure that I'm certain with that, so I'll look that up and report back.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Jonathan, I do have a couple of questions for you. Following up to Roy, Roy had a question that there is no maximum fill, but if I look at the grading plan, it shows to be a balanced site, correct? So any, any soil that they're cutting, they're filling in on that parcel with nothing coming in or out?
I'd have to defer to Public Works on that. Or, or the architect.
Good evening. The preliminary grading plan proposes an export of 980 cubic yards, which would make it a, an export site on sheet 1 of 2. So including that export, once that dirt is removed, that's where we get to our balance.
Okay, so there is no fill coming in, it's a pure export from that site, so they're not building it up to build the house up?
Correct. Any, any dirt associated with establishing, the fills will come from on-site, and then an excess of dirt during the construction is proposed to be exported and taken off the site.
And then, Jonathan, one last question. When we're looking at measuring the heights, we're comparing the Orange County, you know, old standards against the current Dana Point zoning codes. Is there any differences as it relates to the driveway and the slopes for the driveways of what the maximums are for, for here, and what others have been built to date?
No, it's the same.
Okay, I just wanted to see if there was any variance there, or from the buildings. Thank you.
All right, and with that, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak?
Yes, we have eight, Chair Opal.
Thank you. All right, when I call your name, you can go to the podium and speak, and you have a three-minute time limit. So first to speak is Charlotte Pritson, Pittson?
Can you hear me okay with the mask? Okay. All right, good evening Dana Point Planning Commission. I'm Charlotte Pittson, I'm owner of a property across the street from the proposed project. I'm here tonight to request that you decline the proposed recommendation to exceed the maximum building height of the Dana Point zoning district at the Silva property, and direct them to redesign within the 24-foot maximum. I'm very concerned that the Community Development Department would recommend a resolution that exceeds the Dana Point zoning code. The applicant is requesting a variance to increase the maximum height of the structure from 24 feet to 30 and 32 and 1/2 feet. The justification is, they increase, increase the height maximums in the 70s, so they should have permission to do it now, 40 years later. It is noted that there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships, as a few of the property owners reasons of why they are making this request for the height. property owners reasons of why they are making this request for the height. They purchased this parceled property, they should have known that there would be a problem. Design a smaller triplex, lower the height of the architectural design. This project is detrimental to the surrounding properties due to the mass and height of the project. Who is to say that the property owner of the adjacent empty lot, which may be these owners, don't request to exceed the maximum height because the owners next door were approved? It will be a vicious circle if they are to say, 40 years ago it was approved, now it should be approved because this was in 2021. When is the city going to stand up by the zoning regulations in a place to protect this coastal community of Dana Point? As a principal of a local elementary school, I always discuss with my students that this, that just because something was allowed in the past doesn't mean we continue to do it, especially if there are new regulations, guidelines, or policies. I share they have to be innovative, to be crea, to create new ways to accommodate these new rules. I don't teach them to take advantage by saying it was allowed before, so approve it again. You can't tell me that the property owner is the only one making this request because of the issues of the property topography. They are requesting modifications to allow the project to better benefit from an ocean view at the detriment of surrounding properties. If you reference the renderings, you can see that they designed a deck with full window, windows on unit A. Based on the pictures, they are clearly going higher than the neighbors for their own benefit. If the slope is a problem, build a smaller triplex or duplex. The challenging topography issues are the neighborhood's problems, are not the neighborhood's problems, they should not be grandfathered in for 40 years of zoning regulations. I know we got my minutes, okay. There are many explanations throughout the proposal that don't take into account the current property owners and the coastal aesthetics, but just refer to the Orange County jurisdiction from years back. Stop the trend in approving over the maximum height restrictions. In closing, we knew when we bought our home that the land across the street was vacant, but we were assured that the realtor, that the Dana Point Building Commission would protect our rights as a homeowner, do the right thing, and send them back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Pittson. I own the home and empty lot at 33712 Holt Hill Road, directly across Elva from the proposed triplex. We apologize this evening, as we find nothing positive nor encouraging about the proposed triplex that should probably be a duplex. First of all, when we were negotiating to buy our house, one and a half years ago, one of the concerns we expressed was the undeveloped lot across the street. Our realtor assured us, after speaking with the city of Dana Point, that there are very strict restrictions, and any building would not be allowed to exceed the height of any adjacent building per zoning of Dana Point, or allow the project to exceed maximum allowable height for zoning district. Obviously, they did not talk to Mr. Siampa over there. Well, for some reason supports this project, without even discussing it with anyone on Holt Hill Road who are impacted. Instead, he spoke to people on Copper Lantern. If you refer to the pictures here, right here, you look there, the people that are impacted on Copper Lantern is the side of a four unit, hardly being impacted. The people across the street on Holt Hill Road are the people being impacted. It is hard for us to fathom that you would even consider such an application, given how it doesn't appear to conform to any of the existing building heights around it. Again, I refer to this picture. Take a look at the yellow line, that's how high they're proposing it to be, versus the purple line on one, two, and three, which shows the existing heights, eight feet taller. The owner would, didn't wonder why nobody bothered to build 30 years ago? Again, we review exhibit A, which he already showed us. If we take a look at exhibit A, you can see by the yellow that I did, they're actually putting in dirt to build up, rather than taking dirt out and making all the buildings the same height. Units B and C on the overly impacted lot that have, uh, wait, I'm sorry. If we, um, project, build up the existing slope for unit A to achieve the desired height. Instead, the commissions should require the project to dig down to the unit A. So I want you now to imagine your own house. One day you go out in your backyard, and your neighbor erected a billboard on the back of his house that's six up eight feet higher than the other roof lines, and it was approved by your city. The other roof lines are all sloped, but this rectangular billboard is all your eyes go to every time you step into your backyard. Your thought, how could the city approve this? How could they let this happen? I, I want you to think about that as you make the decision this evening. Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. I am a property owner on Copper Lantern, and I am going to be right at the back end, and my biggest concern is noise. I don't want any noise pollution as far as the generators are concerned, and also there's supposed to be a sump pump down in the area there that is going to be built into, as I understand it, they are going to build the sump pump into the, into the dirt, and the dirt is actually going to be raised. It's going to be right behind my unit. I'm concerned about noise, and I don't think it's very healthy for, to have to have a noise pollution there. So I, I don't have the same experience of you guys having the height, but I am deeply concerned about the, the noise, and that's about it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. On the next one, I actually have two people listed, Brett Lindstrom and Shannon Lindstrom. Are you going to speak separately or together? Yeah, it's just if you're speaking separately, I just want you to fill out a separate card.
First off, I'd like to thank Vice Chair Eric Nelson for coming out and meeting me, as long, as well as my neighbor Tim. When you're out on property, you get to see just how overbearing and how, how close it is to the other projects. When you're just looking at the plans, they don't even have my home, 33758 Copper Lantern, just to the south even on the plans. It's like, but our door, here's our, here's our step to go up to our house, and then there's a plank right there, like three feet away. That's where the overhang is going to be. It seems like eight and a half feet isn't a, that's not a variance, that's a rewriting of the code, that's more than 33%. Doesn't seem like a variance to me. They're also so close to us that the power lines have to be taken down and then dug out. I don't know where they're planning on putting the, the building out, understand where the room's going to be for them to dig it out. Are we going to have to dig out our sidewalk that we already had, that's been there for 40 years, to put those power lines? Or is it going to go on their side? John spoke about this was going on in, in August, and how they didn't want to put a retaining wall on our side, they kind of just assumed, there was no communication at all until we got the letter in the, in the, in the mail saying, hey, there's a hearing on Monday. The architect, John, said that he talked to the architect, and the architect said that he talked to people in the area, and everyone was renters, and there wasn't any owners. There's no communication from the architect, architect at all, from the get-go. We kind of felt like we've been blindsided. We, it's, I feel like I've become more of a community because it's all, like, I haven't, didn't really know my neighbors until we all kind of came together to kind of fight what's going on right here. Also, when I, when I purchased my property, I, I knew that there's a chance that there was going to be a building put next to me, and, but I assumed it was going to be 24 feet, not 32 feet. That takes away the view of the church that I got married in, all of San Clemente, San Clemente Pier, the whole entire ocean view that I have. It affects my property value, just to gain property value for someone else that's, it's not even built yet. Also, if they're comparing the building to other buildings in the area, it's eight feet taller than our building, right next door, and it looks, it has no aesthetic, like, nothing compared to any other building in the neighborhood has that kind of modern type of architecture. That's about it. I just hope that you guys enforce the code that Dana Point has. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, Donald White.
Yes, my wife Betty and I are the, are part of the owners of the building that is next to the proposed development. It's actually, proposed development would go perpendicular into the side of our structure, which is 33751 Caile La Primavera. And we, while we have some reservations about the proximity of the patios at the back of units B and C, as far as proximity to the deck up on our A unit of our triplex, which is next door, even of greater concern is the fact that the wall that will run down alongside of this is going to change the flow of water. Instead of being able to drain in multiple directions, it'll have a funneling effect down into the side of our property. Now, there was a meeting a week ago, I guess it was a week ago today, last Wednesday, I was there, I believe Mr. Siampa was there, and, and Mr. Williams, and we've talked to them about this, but this is a big concern because when you have water coming down along that wall, it comes down into, we have a sidewalk that runs along the side of the building, and then there's a, a very short wall, curb if you like, that runs down to protect that, but it's only about maybe two inches above ground level. And you could see what happens, even though we're in a semi-arid area, we know from time to time what does happen, and that could do, create quite a mud flow right across into our property. Now, once again, I have talked to Mr. Williams about it, and he has assured me that by this Friday, he should have a proposal or what they could do about this, but it involves the other property. As you can see, when you look at the map that was projected up here at the beginning of the meeting, there are two lots, the other one's actually larger, that would be draining down in, in there. And that's what we're most concerned about. While we have concerns about the proximity of the patios, we're concerned about the damage that could be done by a mud flow into our property. And I just wanted to go on record to have this there, and if necessary, we could write that up and submit it to the commission. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. So next to speak, Cam Myers.
Good evening. My name's Cam Myers. I live across the street, Elva. I have a home that I bought 30 years ago, and when I bought it, I inquired about the two bare lots that are directly across the street, and knew that there would be a potential buyer, but was assured there's a height limit in Dana Point, not to worry about it. In those years, it's been sold three or four times, I believe, and nobody's ever gone forward with it, probably because they realized the problems with the topography. Now, all of a sudden, this, I don't know, five weeks ago, we saw poles go up and, and the wires or the string with the pink flags, the, to show what the building was going to look like. Our concerns are, this is going to be three units, as I recall, I think it's two bedrooms each, two car garages each, on an 8,000 square foot lot, that's parking for six cars plus one on common property, seven cars, and up to two people per room, so that's 12 people, on a tiny little lot with no green space, a lot of concrete, a lot of buildings, it's going to destroy views, and it's going to be a, a lot of impact. And I don't think, I don't think going eight feet higher than what we were promised and what the city code says is a good decision, especially since there's another vacant lot right next to it. So I don't know that, I don't know the ultimate impact of a flat roof building, but there's potential perhaps for people to access that, put umbrellas up, whatever. I just don't think that you should allow this variance. It's clear they want to build up retaining walls in the back to maximize the view, and that's why they have to go eight feet higher. That's a whole nother story than what should be allowed. They could easily have a variance on the, on the driveway grading slope as opposed to on the height of the building. So I would suggest considering another alternative or lowering the size of the building height. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kimberly Larson.
Yes, hello. I'm Kimberly Larson, and I live on Holt Hill Road, across the street from, from this, this lot. And when we were shopping for the home, we saw the, obviously saw the vacant lots across from us, and the, we went down to the planning department and asked, inquired as to what the regulations were. Our real estate agent also did this, and we were told what, what they would be, and based upon that, we thought we should be fine as far as the, the view not being affected. Now, this has gone higher, the views are affected on at least three of the lots on Holt Hill Road, and so it's impacting our, the value of our properties, and it's impacting our views. And people also have done some grading and, and done some, like, flat space next door, knowing that they would have nice views of the harbor and of the ocean. Those will be affected as well. So we don't understand why somebody can come in and build higher, and why the planning department would, would possibly allow it. The other thing we're concerned about is possibly roof decks would go up, the trees that are planned for could also possibly block the views, and, and very concerned that this will set a precedent for the lot next door. They're going to have to come higher also to gain the views, and that will, that will affect more lots across the street. So we're just asking that you enforce the code and stay to the limits, the height limits that were, that we were told when we bought the, our homes, and have them figure out a different way to accommodate this. I also was wondering, what are the, what are the ceiling heights in, on these condos? If they're higher, could they be brought down a little bit, or could there be things done creatively to stay within what the, the zoning codes are? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tim Wolford.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you very much for being here and being a part of this process, and for giving me the time and my neighbors the time to address the issues that we're having. I can't add too much more to what's been said here. I've sent you all a note from me, an email addressing my specific concerns. What I would like to address is the enormity of this project simply cannot even be fathomed until you're onsite and you see actually what it looks like. The first picture I've seen of a rendering, it didn't appear in the plans that I received... The first picture I've seen of a rendering, it didn't appear in the plans that I received two business days ago. But now that I see the rendering, to not include a rendering that includes the impact and where it resides into the buildings adjacent to it that have been there since the seventies is just, it's appalling. Because unless you're standing there seeing the structure, the massive structure that's proposed to be there, you cannot even fathom the impact that it's going to have on the neighborhood. There's just no way to even, to see it looking at a drawing or listening to somebody talk about it. All this technical, you know, I've been a mathematician for fifty years of my life, and I can't, in two days' time, I can't decipher what's all happening in those plans. And so I'm requesting that we postpone any decision on this till we can all take a look at what's really happening at that place. Because it's not being depicted by those plans, one bit at all. All the things that these neighbors have talked about are just mind-useful to the impact you have when you stand there on our deck or from Selva Road and look at how huge this thing is. It does not in the least bit match what's going on in that neighborhood. The other thing I want to address is just the process itself. To, to, I, so many projects have been attempted to be done on this particular lot, that we know that it's a problem. And to have this thing start back in August or September and just find out about it two weeks ago is ridiculous. I come down my steps in the morning, and six feet away from me, there's a thirty-five-foot pole obscuring my whole view of the city and any sunlight that comes down onto my deck. It's ridiculous. And I understand that people have a right to, 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 to develop their land and to make something work. I appreciate that. The whole thing is shocking. I'm completely not in favor of the design the way it is, and I can't understand why the neighborhood, and at least us, who, we're going to be the most impacted because we're right on the, literally, I could high-five with a broomstick who my neighbors are going to be now. That's how close it is. And, and I understand this, something has to be done and something has to happen for it to be developed. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, there's one more.
Good evening. My name is Tori Wolford. I am thirty-six years old. I grew up here in Dana Point. I went to Dana Hills High School. My request right now is that this is one-hundred percent postponed. Now, like my father said and all the neighbors, everybody has the right to develop, one-hundred percent. I'm in full favor of that. But until you stand at the stairwell and you look across from me to this wall, that is where the new building is coming up. We're talking about fourteen-foot retaining walls that no dirt's coming in. I, I don't know how that's even possible, but please, like, I want to know. I want to understand. I'm also, I've lived in this property now for six years. Both my parents own it. Never once did I receive anything in the mail, a knock at my door, anybody telling me that this was going to be happening. So we can use the conversation around, you're a renter, sure, by all means. But we had two renters in the condo, and one's gone, two days after those posts went up. Now, I get it. I get it. I get the development gets to happen. We all understand that. However, here in Dana Point, we are a community, and it's really great to live here because it kind of has that family vibe versus you go north to Newport. However, moving forward with a project like this and the amount of impact that it's going to have on this community, given the current circumstances, we're in the middle of COVID right now. We don't go to work. I work from my home. I run leadership trainings. How am I going to manage running my leadership trainings when in, what, three months, I'm going to have tractors coming in? Zero time to plan, zero time to actually make accommodations in my life so that we can further my work in our businesses. So please take that into consideration as you go into this. This is not normal times. Most of us work from home, so bringing in a huge construction project that's going to have major effects, not only on our day-to-day life due to our working from home, you have a school principal here who probably is teaching school on Zoom and trying to support her teachers. So this has multiple impacts. It's not just about the city coordinates and, I mean, a thirty-three percent exception? I mean, like, come on now. Like, that's, that's irresponsible. That is irresponsible. So my request is that at least we have some time to consider it because somebody who lives on the property, I was never once told that anything was happening. No mail correspondence, no voicemails, no nothing. But I definitely was reached out when the city council came up and we were getting, you know, started being asked to vote certain ways. So we have the means to be able to have those communications. So at least at this moment, allow us to digest what may happen so that we can make plans in our life, and we can really take a look at what's within the laws of our town. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back for commissioner discussions. Anyone want to volunteer? Okay, go ahead.
Got a couple of follow-up questions. John, can you, on the, on the noise issues that were raised, I didn't see generators on here. Are there generators proposed?
I believe a generator will be required as backup for the sump pump.
Okay, and where is that generator?
I believe that that's what the speaker was mentioning.
Do you know where the generator is located?
I'd have to defer to the architect for that.
Okay, let's get.
I do have one follow-up to you related to the hillside development ordinance. It states that it should be measured from the garage or existing grade, whichever is lower. So in this case, it would, it would be the existing grade, in which point the height would be measured if it were to be considered under the hillside preservation ordinance, which it is not.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then, so we talked generators, but pump noise? And I don't know if anybody's here from Public Works, if they've looked at any of the drainage plans and understand sort of the type of pump and capacity and when those would run, if there's any information on that that we could get tonight?
I'll defer to Public Works and possibly the applicant may be able to speak to that.
Good evening, Commissioner. Public Works has not reviewed the details of the proposed pump system nor the specifics of the noise. That is a part of our normal permit review and technical review as far, as far as pump selection, vicinity to adjacent structures, adjacent neighbors, and noise. That is a part of our review. It just hasn't been conducted as a disentitlement hearing.
So in your, on a normal daily or project review, a project like this, I mean, what, what type of noise would be expected from a sump pump, and when would it operate?
In a typical scenario, it's just the, the pump would obviously be operating to access stormwater. So typically during a storm, maybe subsequently after a storm for some period of time until all the water is pumped up to Selva. All functioning aspects of a development and a home have to meet the city's noise ordinance. So similar to a pool equipment, similar to any kind of typical other pumps that are on smaller developments, three-unit apartments, things like that, noise is considered under the noise ordinance. So like I said before, the selection of the pump, the specifics of the pump will come with noise information from the manufacturer. Those all be taken into consideration during the plan review.
Okay, and then just one last question. Is that, is that pump typically underground or above ground?
It would be located underground in a vault.
Okay, so like a, in a sewer manhole or something?
Correct, something similar to that.
Thank you. And then, I'm sorry, because I might have a couple of questions for you here on this, on the issues with mud flow. I understand there's a lot in between. There was a concern brought up about changing of the flow. Has that been looked at, or is that expected to occur in the event there's a development here? Or does that develop, does the development have to make some considerations in their water quality plans?
Water quality is of a.
Or hydrology?
Or, yeah. Hydrology and water quality and storm runoff is a, is a very important issue for Dana Point with our beaches, you know, and our coastal environment. So that has been reviewed. We have conditions of approval that state, you know, that the plans and the development need to take that into consideration multiple times. Any type of untreated and unimproved areas, there's a condition of approval, need to be addressed so that we don't cause continuous mud, sediment, erosion. The vacant lot on the corner there, which is proposed, which is, is not proposed tonight, does present some plans. But again, as a part of the Public Works approval of the grading and the drainage aspects of this plan, any kind of off-site infiltration is included in the review of both water quality and drainage and any potential impacts to neighboring properties because of this development is all taken into consideration.
Okay, thank you. Jonathan, can you, on the roof issue, so there's been a discussion about the flat roof, about roof decks. Can you first tell me what the height difference with a pitch roof? You know, what does that, how does that change the measurement or the max height of the building? And then also, what is the, you know, can you just put a roof deck in, or is there some process that you would have to go through in the event this project's approved, it's built, and then you've got these roofs? Can someone just throw some lawn chairs up there and an umbrella and call it a deck? Or how does that work?
Certainly. So with the first question, the allowed roof height or maximum structure height is directly dependent upon the pitch of the roof. So anything from a flat roof up to a three-and-twelve pitch is allowed twenty-four feet. From three-and-twelve to six-and-twelve allows for a twenty-six-foot tall roof, or structure. And then from six-and-twelve up to twelve-and-twelve would be twenty-eight feet.
So you get an additional up to four feet off the, from a flat roof to the most extreme pitch?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And in regards to the roof deck, that does require a separate entitlement review, which is, does require a public hearing. It's a minor site development permit. And there is specific criteria in terms of ensuring that the, the design, that what's proposed is incorporated into the architectural design of the structure. It can't just be placed on top. It has to be integrated. And if a roof deck was proposed and was part of the variance, that would, that would likely not be something that staff would be supportive of.
If we could increase the height of the building, the structure?
It likely would, yes.
Because you have railings and?
Because a roof deck is defined as above the highest plate height for the structure. So yeah, it would absolutely add additional height.
Okay. Okay, I might have more questions, but I think that covers it for the moment. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I have some questions, and they're kind of similar to Vice Chair Nelson's, but I think I want to dig a little deeper. So just to confirm, because I heard talk about generators during construction, is there a condition that they have temp power onsite for construction and not use generators?
I don't know that it's a condition of approval. However, based on my experience, typically temporary power is, is provided.
Okay, so we could add a condition that they have to have temp power?
That, yes.
No generators during construction. Okay, and then as far as the generator for the sump pump, that's a backup in the event that there was a power failure, correct?
Correct.
So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't run in every rain event. It would only run in any rain event where the power went out.
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a holding tank? Or what's the storage or capacity of a holding tank for the sump pump? Or is that determined later with engineering?
There is a requirement in the, in Dana Point that the storm drain system is required to detain the twenty-five-year storm event in the event that the pump capacity and stuff. So there, there will be a tank. It will be designed and engineered as a part of the approval process.
Okay, thank you. And what percentage, the one neighbor below was very concerned about drainage and mud flows and all that stuff. What percentage of the site rainwater is going to be directed to that storage tank and sump pump? So I know all the driveways. What about all the roof areas? Are all the hard surface areas going to be collected and going through that storage tank and not going offsite?
I think I'd, I'd defer to the architect for the specifics, but as a, as a general, currently, currently the drainage plan in its preliminary state shows, shows all of the drainage being directed to the rear and to the pump. Now, in the.
When you say all the drainage, what do you mean? Of the entire site?
The driveway, the driveway and the roof areas would be directed to the, to the pump.
Okay.
Currently in its preliminary state. As the design evolves and should the commission feel necessary, you know, a condition of approval could be that, and we've seen in similar reverse slope, that any, any roof water through downspouts, that's feasible to be directed not to the pump and to Selva Road. We can make that work.
Directly to Selva rather than, but, but in the worst case, if it couldn't get to Selva naturally with gravity, it could be directed to go into the storage tank?
Correct.
Okay. So is the Q or drainage flow amount leaving the site going to be less, under the developed condition going to be less than under the existing condition?
As a requirement of the, the grading ordinance, the flow leaving the site in a developed condition cannot exceed the flow leaving the site in the undeveloped condition.
Okay.
So it will be at least the same through the various additional requirements for storage, for dissipation, for storm water, water quality. It will likely be less.
Okay, thank you. Jonathan, we could add a condition that specified that there would be no roof decks allowed, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And again, I just want to make sure I understand this. If, if the developer built a retaining wall on the right side up to the finished floor eleva, the bottom finished floor elevation of that building A, well, both buildings for that matter, that would effectively reduce the building height, and they would be within the code twenty-four feet. But by not, by choosing not to build that retaining wall, they, they get the excessively high building heights. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay. If they had chosen a design where, let's say that they had a building that was close to Selva, and it wasn't particularly deep. It was, it was relatively shallow off of Selva, so they're not going too far down the slope yet. If they had done something like that, would, could their ridge line have been higher than what they're proposing within the twenty-four-feet height?
I'm not, can, can you try to explain that a little bit more? The building is closer to Selva.
The building height, the building height is measured from the lowest point of the structure. And so by having it the depth that they're proposing, they're getting further down the slope, and therefore that, that makes that building height taller.
Correct, so yes.
If they, if they extended less, less distance down the slope, they would be measuring from a higher point.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so could they have, depending on the depth of that building? Depending on the depth of that building, they could conceivably have a taller building effectively. But it would have a lower height on paper. Is that accurate?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. That's it for now. Thank you.
Jonathan, one of the concerns was no notice to any of the neighbors. When was the notice, the story poles, when were they installed?
The story poles were initially installed on. The eighteenth. However, they they weren't certified at that date and that's why the request to to continue the meeting. Was made on the meeting of the twenty fifth because they're required to be installed and certified seven days in advance of the public hearing. Notification for the project was conducted. On the fifteenth of January. Where it was mailed out.
So so there was a mailing that went to the neighbors within within a certain radius?
Correct, five hundred feet.
And then Dana Point News?
It was also public in the paper, correct.
And what is what is the city's regulations on ocean view blockage?
The city does not have any ordinance limiting or. Protecting ocean views.
I don't have any further questions. If anybody wants to volunteer for commissioner comments. Commissioner McCann?
I have a question. It's for the applicant. Sure.
Good evening, Chair Opal Commissioners. My name is Rob Williams. I'm with Studio Six Architects. I represent the client and any questions? I do have a couple of things I wouldn't mind going over after I answer your question. That's up to you guys.
Why don't you go through those first in case that prompts any additional questions?
Okay, sure. So we've been working on this project for a while. Jonathan knows. I can be a pain in his side quite a bit. Back to one of the questions that came up was the the property does not get to that twenty percent. It's at seventeen percent from the highest to the lowest. But what we have here is the first twenty two feet of the property, it drops down almost thirty percent. Then it levels off to about eleven percent. Then the last thirty five feet, actually last thirty eight feet, it goes twenty one percent. So what we've got is, yes, true, from the highest point to the lowest point, the average is seventeen percent. But there's some steep portions on this property that our driveway, based on the city's codes, can't catch up to. So and again, you guys do remember the tenth of August when we did meet with you guys. And that was one of our biggest questions is, you know, if we can come in and put some retaining walls in and soften up some of this, we can, based on the code, because we are a condominium project. We're take we take our heights and finish grade. So if we put the walls in on the side yards, we could essentially take our height from those walls. Which would mean we would not exceed the twenty four feet. We probably would be twenty two and twenty four, probably based on the two buildings. But the concern that we had, and we talked about this at the meeting, is if we put these walls right on the property line, even if you try to meander them a little bit. We're going to have between a four and eight foot high wall, depending on where we're taking the heights from, depends on areas, like we were saying, there's parts of this property that. It's gentle slope in the middle, but portions from the top and the bottom that drop off pretty quick. So that obviously affects wall heights as we're trying to keep that finished floor relatively level or finish grade relatively level as it relates to the height. We would have no poles up if we went that route. Because without a variance, there's no poles required. So we would be here with a site development permit on a project that had no variance to differ height. But the concern we had is if you look at the right hand side of the property, the building kind of goes in and out quite a bit. And we wanted to kind of blend that natural grade so there wasn't this, you know, additional barrier that the neighbors would have to deal with. So we agreed that, yes, maybe at the end of the day, certain projects code does not specifically address each case. That's why within the codes is built in variances. So we felt at the time when we left the meeting that a variance would be something that we could move toward as far as that. But the driveway itself, I mean, it's difficult at best to get that driveway down so quick. And then we're dealing with cross slopes, we're dealing with motor cords, half percent to one percent, depends on it. It kind of does. Deal with that. Now, as far as the import export. So when you first look at it, you're thinking they've got to be importing some dirt. There's just no way. The thing is, we have a ton of cut with retaining walls, footings and things like that. That are, you know, for both building A and definitely for buildings B and C. Because we're, you know, we've got not just a unit that's off the garage or the driveway height, we've got a whole unit underneath it. And that's digging into that slope. That's a lot of dirt that we're having to cut. That dirt is now being brought in to fill and they did a toll engineering is a civil engineer. They did a very detailed calculation, taking all those spoils of what we're going to deal with and they, based on everything they've done, and I've got to rely on them. They have, they believe we're going to have an export. And back to like Matt's questions or your questions to Matt. Every the roof drains, the driveway drains, all that is, we'll be going down to the sump pump. Because our finished floor of our garage or finished for our unit is well below Silva. So I can't gravity, you know, into the storm system. So that's why, right now, this entire lot sheet flows down to the lower properties. We can't do that. You know, we're changing the direction of the drainage. So we have to collect it into a vault. And there will be a generator. The generator is there and you're right. That generator only kicks in, worst case, if there's a power failure. And but generally, that vault will take up all that water during a storm. But during normal irrigation, because we're dealing with, you know, the type of landscaping that we deal with, drought tolerant, there's not a lot of irrigation in general for this property, just because the type of plants we use. So that generator is probably only going to, not generator, but that sump pump is only going to kick in when there's a storm. And it's got to be a pretty decent storm, not just, you know, a little bit of rain here and there. It's there for that purpose because I can't, I don't, I don't want it. That's why it's been designed this way. I don't want it to overflow onto the neighbors. So that's why that sump pump is set up, which will be all ejected to the street. So, you know, generally, I mean, that's, you know, where we are today. It's a three unit condominium project. We have never had any plans of putting a roof deck on any of the flat roofs. It's a contemporary flat roof design, just strictly based on the type of architecture that the client wants. We're not, we have no intention of ever putting roof decks on top of it. So that's my quick little discussion. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
So my question is this, there's a lot of obviously neighbor opposition to, you know, and kind of. I want to use the word heartburn, but I'm sure there's a much stronger word. About the height variance. Would you consider postponing and adding in that wall? Or is that something you would consider doing?
I mean, obviously, that was what we were hoping to discuss or come up with conclusion on the tenth of August. The adding that wall does not change the mass of the project. The height's not going to change. It's just going to, we're going to be adding additional height on site walls up against the neighbors property line to work within the code. So now I can take my height from the finish grade because I've added walls to justify that I'm meeting the code. But the heights of the building won't change at all. I just won't have a variance because I've raised retaining walls on the side yards.
I understand that. I have no other questions for him.
Yeah, Rob, when you were you met with the planning commission previously, it was not an approval of the alternate plan. It was just a discussion where we did some some comments back to you. Let me just clarify that. The second thing is, have you or the owner met with the neighbors to discuss this project?